Good evening, Chair. Calls the order, public hearing for Resolution 037-23, Master Water and Sewer Plan Update, Fall 2023. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you all very much. Lawrence A. Richardson, Jr., and we have our county government with us today. I bring you Krista, Krista Dombeck, our civil engineer with our Department of Public Works, Division of Water and Sewer. I also have Bill Betton, our deputy director of Water and Sewer, and Dave Burke, our chief from Water and Sewer. And they'll be here to make a presentation on the bill. I believe you may have a folder, and there's also a PowerPoint, and they'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Good evening. The first section of revisions is tables and grids. Revision number one and two are located in Falston on the fronting Harford Road, just southwest of Connolly Road, and are in grid A4 of the water and sewer service area maps. Revision one is shown in yellow, consists of parcels 134, 135, and 552, as shown on tax map 55. These are three individual properties that are zoned R2, and each has an individual existing single-family dwelling. There is an existing sewer man located on the south along the rear of the parcel, of the three parcels, which provides direct access to public sewer. Therefore, the action is to move revision one from the sewer six category into the sewer three category. Revision two is shown in green, is just northeast of revision one, and consists of parcels 132 and 133. Parcel 133 was previously subdivided into lots one and two. Like the previous revision, these are three individual properties zoned R2 and have existing single-family dwellings. An extension of public sewer from the existing main located at the southeast corner of revision one would allow the three parcels direct access to, direct access to public sewer. Because an extension is required, we are requesting a service category change from the sewer six to the sewer five category. Revision three is located in Bel Air and is along Wars Mill Road directly across from Southampton Middle School and extends to Southampton Road. Located in grid B2 of the water and sewer service area maps and tax map 41, it consists of parcel 200 and was formerly known as the Boyer property. The Creekside subdivision is zoned R2 and has a preliminary plan approval for 135 townhouse units for the elderly. This property was requested to be moved from the water and sewer five category into the water and sewer three category.
Can I, can I ask a question at this point, or wait till they're done?
Let's wait till they're done, please.
If I could have you remain on that page for one second and draw your attention to the lower half of the top page. The next section that's going to be revised is Chapter Three, Section 3.13, entitled Proposed Developments, which was revised to add the description for the approved Creekside development that was discussed previously. The description is as follows. The proposed development is located on the north side of Wars Mill Road and the east side of Southampton Road, northeast of the town of Bel Air. The 58.6 acre site is shown on grid B2 and is zoned R2. The development proposes 135 townhouse units for the elderly, which will create a water demand of 23,625 gallons per day, and the projected wastewater flow from the development is 30,375 gallons per day. Section 3.15, Table 3-1, Planned Developments, was revised to include the new Creekside subdivision and to adjust units for six existing projects that have had approved revised preliminary plans, or the units have been connected to public utilities. The second page shows the summation of the new and adjusted units. The last page of Table 3-1, as seen on the slide, shows the revisions to the summary of the remaining residential, business, and industrially zoned units with approved preliminary plans within the last six months. As you can see, the net change in residential units was an addition of 108 units, with 3,179 units remaining. There is also a reduction of 44 equivalent residential units in the business zone, for a total of 489 units remaining. There was no change to the industrial acreage. Table 3-8, Planned Waterworks, Immediate Five and Ten-Year Priorities. This table was updated to reflect the requests made by the city of Aberdeen. The table in this workbook includes only projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital water projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter Three of the overall water and sewer master plan Moving on to Chapter Four. Table 4-2, Planned Capital Sewer Projects, Immediate Five and Ten-Year Priorities. This table was revised to remove two Harford County projects. One was completed, and the Hollywood replacement sewer project was determined not necessary. The city of Aberdeen requested that the timing schedules for the five, five of their projects be revised. The table in this workbook includes only projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter Four of the overall water and sewer master plan document. The final section of the workbook includes the requests from the city of Aberdeen, as well as the developer for the Creekside subdivision. Are there any questions?
I think, first of all, Chris, let me, let me thank you for visiting with Councilman Guthrie and I earlier, along with Darrell. We appreciate the time that you gave us.
You're welcome.
And yes, of all the updates that I've seen, this is probably the one that has the least activity in it. So, Mr. Guthrie, you had a question?
Just a quick one. I think I know the answer to this, but I think maybe that ought to appear in, in there instead of using the definition of building for the elderly. I think it's 55 and over?
Correct.
Correct. There's a lot of people 55 don't want to think they're elderly. I passed that, so it doesn't matter to me, but, but maybe if we thought we'd use 55 and over instead of elderly, a lot of people might appreciate that.
Billy noted.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else, questions?
I do. I do. We'll have that.
That's okay.
So Creekside is in?
District E.
It's in District E?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, okay. Bel Air Overlook and Bel Air Village. So can you tell me Bel Air Village, is that apartments? It says townhouses, apartments, commercial, correct?
Uh, Bel Air Village is?
Is that Plum Tree?
Townhouse, apartments, and commercial property.
Is that Plum Tree?
That is off of Plum Tree, yes.
That's off of Plum Tree. And we don't know where that stands yet, but in your book, you've got it logged for 383 units of apartments, correct?
It, that's a units total for the whole subdivision.
Units total. And that includes any commercial connections and all that?
Commercial, yes. It's commercial apartments and then the townhouses.
Where's Bel Air Overlook?
Bel Air Overlook is, that currently is sitting with 229 possible developments. You have 229 units for development. So they have not constructed anything since, since that plan's been approved.
And where is that?
Where is the Bel Air Overlook?
Yeah.
That I don't know directly.
Conawingo? Is that, is that the Hickory Apartments?
No, that wouldn't be the Hickory.
Bel Air Overlook is located near, well, on the site of the older Bel Air Auto in Bel Air. That's Bel Air Overlook, Route 1.
Okay. So I thought that was scrapped a long time ago. Is that back on the table?
No, these are, so, these are projects that have preliminary plan approval. So until they're completely scrapped, we keep them in the books.
Okay. I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Guthrie?
Just piggyback on that. I thought after, when they get preliminary plan, plan approval, they're good for two years and then they're, they're off. They have to reapply.
Correct. That is correct. But we keep these on the books just for our tabulation, so we know what units have already been associated with that property.
Okay, so they're not on the books to proceed?
Not, not for us.
It's wait, they gotta come back and reapply, right? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Very good. Then this will conclude this public hearing for Resolution 037-23. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into the public hearing for Bill 23-029, Tax Credit Nonprofit Swim Clubs. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a tax credit for nonprofit swim clubs in the county to exclusively provide a recreational outlet for local community. This is allowable by enabling legislation from Annapolis under Maryland Tax Property Code 9-244, which permits counties to be able to do it individually. So this would allow, I think there's five major nonprofit pools in the county to be excluded, 50% of their tax, property tax for each of those pools. So, and I appreciate the sponsor's support, myself, Councilman Guthrie, Councilman Bull Sodles, Councilman Riley, and Council President Vincenti.
So if I may, I had the pleasure of visiting all of these swim clubs, although it's been quite some time ago when this bill first surfaced. And I think Mr. Sands is here tonight, he can speak to it as well. But got to go firsthand and see the impact that these swim clubs have on the communities, the investment that they've made to enhance job opportunities for children during the summer, and the fact that they open up their, their venues for community movie nights and things of that nature, especially in Falston. That's, that's the one I'm really speaking to, although I did visit all of them. So I think it's, it's a great way for us to give back to these organizations that give so much into their communities. And with that, I'm going to open it up to any council member. Anyone else want to speak to it? Mr. Riley?
Yes, I want to thank Councilman Pennman. He's the one that really pushed this forward, and Council Pennman, I appreciate it and I'm 100% behind it.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Did you go swimming, Pat?
Not yet. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have three this evening. Michael Genske followed by John Myers and Ryan Benkin.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, I think you hit up some of the points that I was going to make as far as Maryland council passed this law actually back in 2006, and it was unanimous. Came to my attention about five years ago, which I've been, have been working on that. I think it's when you had visited Mr. Vincenti at the Falston Club. So, you know, this is something that's been in the making for about five years. I do appreciate Councilman Pennman speak, hearing us and bringing this to the council's attention. We do a lot of work in the community, like you said. We, we employ over 75 individuals at our club every year. Majority of those are under 18 and also under 16. So a lot of our folks are, our kids are, our first jobs allow, you know, our community to get the lifeguarding skills, as well as working in concessions and things of that nature. We do do training at the facilities for these children, lifeguard, health-saving opportunities. We do work in, in hand-in-hand with like youth benefit, Falston Middle School, Falston High School to do events at our facilities. And, I mean, this benefits over 2,000 families in Harford County across five different swim clubs. And, you know, we're, none of these swim clubs are, are operating for profit. These are all nonprofit swim clubs. We run a budget, and everything goes back into the community, investments. We use vendors from Harford County to do capital improvements and things of that nature. So, you know, all of that, plus with the rising cost, it's been difficult over the last four or five years. I'm the treasurer of the Falston Club, and I've been working on the budgets for the four or five years, and majority of our cost on each budget is, is labor. So with the Maryland increase in minimum wage over the last four or five years, it's really increased our budget and really, it, it has hurt us over the last couple of years trying to keep our, our membership dues down and able to do everything for the community that we can. So we do appreciate the opportunity to review this tax credit, and it will help us a long way continuing to provide for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, sir?
John Myers, 1217 Brighton Lane, Bel Air, Maryland. I just appreciate the opportunity to address the council about how great this credit could be to the pool and how great the pool is to Harford County. In 2019, our friends moved up here from Blatter County. They invited us to the Falston Club. We joined them up and bottom in Harford County in 2020, and we've enjoyed being members at the pool. And besides just being a benefit to the pool, you know, we are constantly supporting, you know, different organizations that come and use the facilities. Falston High School has a couple charitable events, they're able to use the facilities. As Mr. Genske said, we are constantly running the pool, and a lot of those pools, you know, has costs associated with it, and we're hiring local vendors. So we're really excited for this opportunity, for the 750 families that belong to our pool, the 300-some children that swim in our swim teams. It's just a really great community, you know, asset to have, and we really appreciate any support to keep those costs down for our members, so we can continue to provide a great summer, excitement for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes, Ryan Benkin, 2010 Hillcroft Drive, Forest Hill. I think between John and Mike, they said a lot. The one thing I just want to add is that we also facilitate a team for the Harford Swim League, right, which is a major league within Harford County for kids to compete in via swim. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Very good. With no more speakers, this will conclude this public hearing on Bill 23-029, and we'll take it up at a future meeting. With it being 7:05, we're going to take a short recess and start back at 7:30. Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Calls the order Legislative Session Day 23-026. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Guthrie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, pray that this, us up here on this council makes all the right decisions. There's always a lot of amendments and a lot of bills up here, and we all have differences of opinions, and we hope that we can all get together and, and on both sides of defense and agree to bills that keep our county going forward.
If I may, before we start, I want to recognize former Lieutenant Governor Lloyd Rutherford in the chambers with us this evening. Good evening, sir. Agenda number four, Presentation of Proclamations. Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please, Darlene Lough and the Commission on Women members here this evening, please come forward. Mr. Janjordano, whenever you're ready. Ms. Sodles, you go.
This is going to be a long night of reading, folks, so tonight's, this one's probably going to be my best one. I got the pink tie on. October's National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. About 30% of all newly diagnosed cancers in women each year are breast cancer. There have been many advances over the, over the years that are helping patients now, but much more is still needed. We are hopeful for a cure. When I reach out to the Commission for Women to help me recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, they immediately mention Mrs. Darlene Lough. Her strength, courage, and willingness to bring awareness and a hope for a cure to our community is inspirational. The more I learned about her, the more I knew Darlene was the person this council should recognize on behalf of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Darlene, I'd like to give you the opportunity to share your story, and then I believe the Commission for Women also prepared a few words. But thank you so much for taking your time to be here, and on behalf of the Harford County Council, we extend our sincere appreciation, our prayers, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second. Lord, give you a mic.
Thank you very much for this acknowledgement. June of this past year, I got a crash course in breast cancer. It's very aggressive, and women really need to go for their mammograms, and even more so, ladies, if you have any history, whatever, go for a breast MRI, push the doctor for a breast MRI. That is the way to, to, to really, really find these, along with mammographies. Also, I, I know a lot of people like to donate money to organizations, you know, breast cancer, particularly this month. Please keep mindful that we need a cure. I have stage four cancer. I need a cure. So when you donate your money, please donate it to research, okay? To research. Don't ignore stage four, please, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stacy, you go, say your.
Hi, Stacy Rebert. I'm the chair of the Women's Commission for Harford County, and this is Bonnie Miranda on our legislative committee, who is a friend of Darlene's, and I appreciate her being here tonight. We just want to let you know there are 32,000 cases, cases right now in Maryland of active cancer patients, with breast cancer being the number one. And of that 1% can actually be men. But right here in Harford County, we have a wonderful partnership with the United, Upper Tessa Peak Medical Center and the Health Department that provides free screening for women who qualify. So I encourage all of our Harford County residents who might not have the ability or the insurance to please contact our Health Department or Upper Tessa Peak, and they can, and they might, hopefully they can qualify for that very important screening. And I want to appreciate and definitely thank Darlene for being the face of a warrior here in Harford County. So thank you so much for this. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jess? We have none. Six, Special Presentations, we have none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Public Hearing October 2nd, 2023. Legislative Day 23-025, October 3rd, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions, we have none. Mr. Janjordano, please read Bill 23-033 into the record for introduction.
Okay. Now the fun begins. Introduction to Bills, Bill 23-033, Refunding Bond Bills. Introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A bill authorizing and empowering Harford County, Maryland, the county, to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue and sell bonds or other evidence of indebtedness in an amount not to exceed $60 million. Principal amount, the refunding bonds, the proceeds thereof to be used for refunding on a tax-exempt or taxable basis, such amounts of the county's. One, Consolidated Public Improvement Bonds, Series 2013A, the outstanding 2013A bonds. Two, Refunding Bonds, Series 2013B, the outstanding 2013 bonds. And three, Consolidated Public Improvement Bonds, Series 2014, the outstanding 2014 bonds, collectively with the outstanding 2013A bonds and outstanding 2013B bonds, the outstanding bonds, as may be in the best interest of the county. The county bonds subject to refunding, the maturities of such outstanding bonds to be refunded here, here and after, referred to as the refunded bonds. The maturities of the county bonds subject to the refunding may be determined by the county executive of the county, subject to approval by resolution of the county council of Harford County, Maryland, the county council, all in accordance with Section 19-205, 19-206, 19-207 of Title 19 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended, Section 2524 of the Charter of Harford County, Section 123-40 of the Code of Harford County, or as otherwise permitted by law, providing that the proceeds of the refunding bonds shall be used to make payment upon all such bonds refunded, including without limitation, the payment of any redemption premium, any interest accrued, or to accrue to the date of redemption of all such bonds refunded, and the cost of issuing the refunding bonds, authorizing and empowering the county to enter into a purchase contract, the forward delivery purchase contract, for all or a portion of the refunding bonds to be entered into the county, and an appropriate underwriter or investment banking firm or financial institution as determined by the county executive in his sole and absolute discretion. Prescribing certain details, incident to the issuance and sale of such refunding bonds, and authorizing of the county council to adopt administration, administrative resolution that shall provide for additional details, incident thereto, including but not limited to, specifying the maturities of the outstanding county bonds, subject to the refunding, to be redeemed with the proceeds of the refunding bonds, and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of any such evidence of indebtedness or financing obligations, providing that the bonds or any other indebtedness shall be issued upon the full faith and credit and taxing power of Harford County, Maryland, providing for disbursement of proceeds of the sale of bonds or other indebtedness authorized herein, and for levying of charges, assessment, and all taxes necessary to provide payment of the principal and premium, and if any, an interest on bonds or other form of indebtedness, providing that certain additional matters may be determined by executive order of the county executive of the county, including but not limited to amendments to the form of the refunding bonds, or amendments to the forward delivery purchase contract as approved by this bill. The form of various documents are necessary to implement the financing authorized herein, the manner of issuance and delivery of the refunding bonds, and the forward delivery purchase contract, and the payment of all necessary expenses in connection therewith, the rate or, the rate or rates of interest to be paid, maturity schedule, redemption provisions, and generally for such other matters as may, as may be deemed appropriate by the county council in connection therewith, providing for the public sale or the private negotiated sale of the refunding bonds or any portion thereof, following a solicitation of offers for the purchase of the refunding bonds, generally providing for and determining various matters in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of refunding bonds. Public hearing scheduled for November 14th at 7:15 in these chambers.
Thank you. Okay. That's the first one out of the way. Next, please read Amendments 1 through 38 into the record for introduction, please, to Bill 23-026.
Amendments 1 through 38, introduced by council members Bennett Guthrie, Janjordano Riley, and Council President Vincenti. Amendment number one, on page three, strike, beginning with, in quotation, "distribution" in line one down through, in quotation, "user" in line three, and substitute, in quotation, "distribution and local delivery center." A facility that performs consolidation, warehousing, comma, packaging, comma, decomposition, and other functions linked with handling to provide value-added services to freight, comma, often in proximity to major transportation routes or terminals. They can also perform light manufacturing activities such as assembling and labeling, also known as fulfillment center, comma. Amendment number two, on page three, after line three, insert, comma, "freight, goods, or materials moved by truck," comma- quotation, "distribution and local delivery center, a facility that performs consolidation, warehousing, comma, packaging, comma, decomposition, and other functions, linked with handling to provide value-added services to freight, comma, often in proximity to major transportation routes or terminals. They can also perform light manufacturing activities, such as assembling and labeling, also known as fulfillment center, comma. Amendment number two, on page three, after line 12, comma, insert, quotations, "loading zone, locations designed for the loading and unloading of freight, period, loading docks, or structures which allow a truck to load or unload directly from the bed of the truck", quotation. Amendment number five, on page four, strike, beginning with, quotation, "manufacturing", in line 10, down through, in quotation, "which", in line 11, and substitute, in quotation, "manufacturing, comma, production, handling, comma, consolidation, comma, distribution, comma, and/or warehousing, comma, or where order processing occurs, comma, that may include large areas of unenclosed storage and fulfillment space, period, these uses", quotation marks. Amendment six, on page four, in line 13, strike, in brackets, produce, stored, and substitute, quotation marks, produce, comma, handled, comma, consolidated, comma, packaged, comma, distributed, distributed from, quotation marks. Amendment number seven, on page four, after line 19, insert, brackets, five, modification of height requirements.
That's not a bracket.
Just five.
Set five.
Five, modification of height requirements. Maximum building height may be exceeded, inside and rear yards are increased in width and depth by one, two.
One in brackets.
One in brackets, two additional, foot in brackets, feet for every one foot of excess height. Amendment number eight, on page five, in line two, strike, in brackets, A. Amendment number nine.
Or not brackets.
Quotations.
Yeah.
Parentheses?
Yes.
Okay. Parentheses.
Lot of A.
Amendment number nine, on page five and line three, strike, in quotation marks, 42 feet, and substitute, in quotation marks, 36 feet in the commercial industrial CI district, and 40 feet in the light industrial LI and general industrial GI districts, in quotation marks. Amendment number 10, on page five and line five, strike, in parentheses, 40%, and substitute in quotations, 40%, and substitute in quotations, 55%. Amendment number 11, on page five and line seven, strike, in parentheses.
Quotation.
Quotations, 60%, and substitute in quotations, 85%. Amendment number 12, on page five, after line eight, insert, in brackets.
Parentheses.
Parentheses.
Number four.
Four, buildings shall be designed solar-ready or to include solar arrays and solar panel or green rooftop installations. All buildings and facilities shall be lead, silver, or higher, or comply with a comparable green building program at the same standard or higher. Amendment number 13, on page nine, in line nine, strike.
Page five.
On page five, in line nine, strike, four, and substitute, number five. Amendment number 14, on page five, strike in its entirety, line 14. Amendment number 15, on page five and lines 15 and 17, strike, in quotations, B, and in quotation, C, respectively, and substitute, in quotation, A, and in quotation, B, respectively. Amendment number 16, on page six, strike, beginning with, in quotation, B, in line one, down through, in quotation, project, in line 13.
Line three.
In line three. Amendment number 17, on page 10, in lines 15, 17, and 23, and each instant after, in parentheses, truck, insert, in parentheses, and/or trailer. Amendment number 18, on page 11, in line 15, after, in parentheses, truck, insert, in parentheses, and/or trailers. Amendment number 19, on page 15, after line four, insert, number 15, grandfathering. A, in brackets, the provisions of Council.
Parentheses.
In parentheses, the provisions of Council Bill 23-26 shall not apply to either any project which has acquired a vested right through the actual fizzle commencement of a significant and visible construction which was commenced in good faith with the intention to complete the construction and was commenced pursuant to a validly issued building permit, or any project which has received site plan approval prior to the effective date of the bill. Those projects shall remain subject to the zoning requirements applicable prior to the adoption of Council Bill 23-26. In parentheses, B, any development that received a certificate of occupancy prior to the adoption of Council Bill 23-26 is not subject to the requirements contained therein, and those developments shall remain subject to the zoning requirements applicable to the time the certificate was issued. In parentheses, C, the provisions of Council Bill Number 23-26 shall further not apply to any other principally permitted use, or warehousing, distribution, and/or local delivery is an accessory use to the principal use of the property, or to which the development or redevelopment which is located within an existing industrial park for the purpose of Council Bill 23-26, an industrial park shall be defined as more than four contiguous lots located in a commercial industrial CI, light industrial LI, or general industrial GI zoning classification. In these instances, the zoning requirements prior to the adoption of Council Bill 23-26 shall apply. In parentheses, D, Section 267-20, in parentheses, D, of the Hartford County Code shall not apply to any existing use which, as a result of Council Bill 23-26, becomes a non-conforming use. Amendment number 20, on page 23 and line 10, striking, in quotations, improvements, and.
That's actually impovements.
Improvements.
Impovements.
Improvements, and substitute, in quotation, improvements. Amendment number 21, on page 23 and line 12, strike, in quotations, operational, and substitute, in quotations, operational, comma, except for any road or road improvements required by the Maryland State Highway Administration. Amendment number 22, on page 27 and line 23, strike, in quotations, Section 3, and substitute, in quotation, Section 2. Amendment number 23, on page 28, strike, beginning with, in quotation, attachment, in line one, down through, in quotations, chart, in line three. Amendment number 24, on page 28 and line 13, strike, in quotation, Section 4, and substitute, in quotation, Section 3. Amendment number 25, on the title page and the first line after, in quotation, center, insert, in quotation, freight. Amendment number 26, on the title page and the second line after, in quotation, terminal, insert, in quotation, loading zone. Amendment number 27, on the title page and the fifth line after, in quotation, amended, insert, in quotation, to repeal and reenact with amendments, Section 267-60, in parentheses, C, and parentheses, five, modification of height requirements. Amendment number 28, on the title page in the 12th line, strike, in quotation, 19-20, and.
That's colon.
Colon, 19, colon, dash, 20, and.
There's new tag.
19, colon, 20.
19, colon, 20, and. Amendment number 29, on title page, strike, beginning with, in quotation, "by", in the 12th line, down through, in quotation, "and" in the 14th line. Amendment number 30, on the title page and the 23rd line, strike, in quotation, 267-60C, parentheses, four, parentheses, A, parentheses, four, and substitute, in quotation, 267-60C, in quotation.
Parentheses.
Parentheses, 14, and in parentheses, five. Amendment number 31, on page one, after, in parentheses, center, insert, in parentheses, freight. Amendment number 32, on page one, after, in parentheses, terminal, insert, in parentheses, loading zone. Amendment number 33, on page two and line nine, strike, 19, colon, 20, and in parentheses. Amendment number 34, on page two, strike, beginning with.
And that was in quotations, by the way, not in parentheses.
On page two, strike, beginning with, in parentheses.
Quotation.
Quotations, "by", in line nine, down through, in quotations, in line 10. Amendment number 35, on page two and line 18, strike, in quotations, 267-60C, parentheses, four, parentheses, A, parentheses, four, and substitute, in quotation, 267-60C, in parentheses, 14, and in parentheses, five. Amendment number 36, strike the attached permitted use chart, use classification, colon, transportation, comma, communication, and utilities, in brackets, TCU?
Parentheses.
Parentheses, TCU. Amendment number 37, on a title page and a 24th line, after, in quotations, amended, insert, in quotation, and by adding a grandfathering provision. Amendment number 38, on page 15, after line four, insert, in quotation, number one, distribution and freight activities in the GI district, comma, provided that all design requirements listed above are met, buildings and facilities in excess of 250,000 square feet of overall space per lot, and exceeding the following intensity of use per lot, colon, a weekday daily trip generation of 1.46 trips per thousand square feet of gross floor area, slash, and/or a peak hour trip generation rate of .12 trips per thousand square feet of gross floor area, comma, may only be located in GI districts and only by special exception.
Good job.
Man, those colons.
Yeah, I know. So because of the timeline, we are going to be considering these amendments this evening, and I would like to bring Amendment 1 through 38 up for a vote. So.
President.
Mr. Guthrie.
I want to pull Amendment 38 and vote on it separate.
You want to separate 38? Anything else? Anyone else?
Mr. President, I'd like to separate number 12, Amendment number 12.
Okay. So may I have a motion to move Amendments 1 through 11?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Guthrie.
He has a motion to approve. Break, Council.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Amendments 1 through 11. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I mean, these, we're only talking about 1 through 11 right now, but I'll just speak to the first 38. It's been a lot of work, a lot of back and forth, a lot of prep. I know from my legislative aide specifically, but all of our legislative aides, and just being able to wrap our hands around this in a timely manner. So thank you to all of them for the work that they do each and every day. It's not always seen or photographed, but, and, you know, some of these amendments came from my office, some of these amendments came from the Council President, you know, some of these amendments came from conversations, you know, later we'll be voting on the truck and/or trailer. That was something that Councilman G. brought to our attention months ago at this point as a concern, and it was something that we hadn't even thought about. So all of this was really a collaborative effort and conversation. I appreciate that work. Not everything is how I would want it on my own, but it's a seven-person process, and I appreciate that process. And I do think, overall, these amendments get us to a better place than before they were introduced.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else?
Ms. Dixon, call or roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Amendments 1 through 11 to Bill 23-026 are hereby approved. May I have a motion on Amendments 13 through 37?
Council President, I move to approve Amendments 13 through 37.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. 13 through 37 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion there? I think I would, I, I'm going to comment and just say that I appreciate all the input from all of my colleagues. I appreciate all the conversations that we had across the county from time to time with individuals. I want to again say that we are not going to satisfy anybody with this legislation, but we're going to do the best to bring something forward, and then, if need be, look at it again. With that, Ms. Dixon, call or roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
I didn't get the chance to say anything.
Oh.
But that's okay. I'll say something.
You can do it next one.
I'll say something. Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, Amendments 13 through 37 are hereby approved. Amendment number 12. Mr. Riley? Well, wait a minute, second. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Council President, I move to approve Amendment Number 12.
Second.
Okay.
To approve it or disapprove?
Approve it.
He just made a motion to approve.
That's second.
Okay.
Mr. Brugge, no.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Amendment Number 12. Is there any discussion? Mr. Riley?
I'd just like to say that there's a lot of amendments that are going to be coming through tonight, and I think adding this solar arrays on top of the roofs not only will, again, it's going to take away from the warehouse as far as the structure's concerned and the height of it, but also the fact that I think it's just, it's overbearing in the cost. And so I'm fully against Amendment Number 12.
Thank you. Mr. Guthrie?
I appreciate, Jim, there's several meetings that you weren't, unfortunately, didn't have a chance to attend, but we met, myself and Tony and Pat were meeting to discuss this amendment in his office, and we were concerned, we did not have any idea what it would cost to make a building solar-ready. And so I talked to, besides our conversation, I talked to the head of Chesapeake, which is one of the big builders that's going to be building this stuff, and he told me that he's totally in favor of it. He said, in fact, all the buildings he builds, he already makes them solar-ready. So we also, Tony knew someone in this business, so Tony put a call in right away to a contractor to try to get a price so we could figure out what it costs to make a building solar at 250,000 square feet. And Tony can speak on it if he wants. The caller called back, and we found out that on a building 250,000 square feet, which costs about a cent of $5 million to build, it costs $100,000 to make it solar-ready. So we didn't think that was much money on top of a building, and they are, the builders are in favor of it. So that's why I support the bill. I'm sorry, Jim, but you missed some of those meetings, and couldn't come, because only three people can be in. Tony, if you want to touch on that.
Mr. Janjordano?
Yeah, as Councilman Guthrie said, conversation about making the building solar-ready, Deion mentioned that he had talked to some of the builders, and when you look at a cost of a building that's $5 million, what I wanted to find out was what's the extra cost to make these buildings that you can put solar on them down the roof? And when my guy came back, builder said, you know, look, it's like $100,000. I mean, that's a small percent.
I mean, that's a small percentage drop in the bucket when they're, when they're doing that. So, this way, if, if it's ever implemented by the state, and the state requires them down the road to, to do something retrofit, these buildings will be done. You're probably only talking, you know, a couple of buildings that are going to be built now, so, so I'm for it, too.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
It's great that, in fact, that what you are not doing is giving the builder a choice, and if I lived in District A or District C, a hundred thousand dollars might not be a lot of money, but in District D, it's a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Pennman?
I agree with Mr. Riley on this. Good night, Jim. I think it's just another government mandate. If the developer wants to decide to put the solar panels on there, they'll decide to put the solar panels, so I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
You know, just to clarify, this amendment does not require a development of warehouses to have solar panels. It just requires that they're solar-ready, meaning that they can handle the weight and material that is involved in putting solar panels on top of a facility. But then, in addition to that, you know, this is one of the things that I've heard from land preservation communities in Hartford County, to protect our green space, to protect our ag space from being used for community solar projects, we make this flat, you know, open to all sunshine rooftops available for solar projects, and it keeps our fields preserved. So, this is very positive for the District D community, which a lot of people who are looking at renewable energy look at as prime land to put solar panels on, and it protects that land from being used for that, because instead, we can look at this large swath of warehouse and freight terminal facilities and say, that's where our solar panels belong, you know, and already constructed upon land. So, I think it's a, it's a, to me, a no-issue amendment. It really, from an environmental perspective, it's great, but also, it can help make a positive use out of building set, a lot of us see in a more negative light.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
On behalf of the solar and putting on a building, to me, it's also the same thing as putting solar out in the middle of a, a farm field. What is that going to do to the habitat, to, to the birds, to the, to, to everything where you've now got this, you know, generation of light and heat that comes off of these solar panels as well? I, I know we, we actually turned down last, last council that was up here, solar panels out in the farm, and it got overturned by the, I guess, what commission was that? They overturned the farm and they.
Public Service Commission.
Public Service Commission. So, so I, I think I have two concerns, you know, also. I mean, I understand about the building, but I also am not sure I'm so crazy about putting solar panels on a roof of a building, and then, you know, do the birds come flock into that, and, and how does that affect, you know, if you've got two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet and you've got three buildings and you've got all solar on that, you know, what does that do to the area, too, with, with heat and with, with trees, with everything? So, I'm not really a hundred percent sold on putting solar on top of buildings either. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Again, you're saying to the builder, just like if you're a resident, you're forcing a resident to put solar on their property. To me, this is one of those things, again, it's an overreach of government, and again, if I had the money and now ACNF, you might be able to afford a hundred thousand dollars on top of a warehouse, but to me, it's just totally ridiculous. You might not put solar on, but you're telling them, they got to put the structure in so that in case they want to put it in. Again, we've got a lot of amendments that are coming up that's costing the builders a lot of money. I just think this is just, this is just an overreach as far as government concern, and I would hope everybody on this stage would say, leave it up to the builder, that if they want to put solar, they can then put the structure in to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie?
And again, the, the contractors are, are going to do it anyway, and they, they send all their buildings, particularly to one contractor. Also, they say that to do it after you build the building, the cost goes five times higher. So, that's the idea, to put it on before. It doesn't make them do anything, you know, if they don't want to put solar on afterwards, they don't have to, but it prepares it, and I think that's a good idea for, for us and for our, and on top of the building, it's not like it's on the grounds, it's on top of the building, and I don't think you're going to bother any animals or anything if the solar's on top of the building. God, you can go all around this town and see solar on top of houses all over the place. You know, I've got three houses in my development that just put solar on, and the, the roofs already take it, so it doesn't take much to, to, to strengthen the roof, you know, to, to prepare it for solar if people wants, want to put solar on. So, it's up to the individual, certainly to the contractor, if they want to put it on or not, but this prepares it.
I think Mr. Riley's going to have the last word on this.
So, Councilman A, do you have solar on your roof?
I do not.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've heard from everyone. Ms. Dixon, call or roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
No.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
So, I'm going to go no as well.
Mr. Vincini?
You already got me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Riley?
I should want me to vote twice?
No for the amendment.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
So, three, excuse me, yeah, three in the affirmative and four in the negative, the amendment twelve to bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-six fails. Amendment thirty-eight, Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, so, on amendment thirty-eight.
It doesn't have to be moved first.
That's what I thought he was going to do, make a motion.
What?
Make a motion.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to make a motion to approve, so, does somebody have to make?
That's what I'm asking you to do, make the motion on number thirty-eight.
To approve?
No, sir. Whatever you're going to do.
Okay, I make a motion on thirty-eight to not approve. That's backwards. It's backwards.
I'm really reluctant to step in, but.
Yeah, he's right.
Robert's rules prefers motions to be stated in the affirmative. For instance, you make a motion to approve, you have a second, and then everybody can vote against it.
Okay.
Rather than having a motion to disapprove.
All right. May I have a motion?
I move to approve amendment number thirty-eight.
Thank you. May I have a second? May I have a second? Amendment thirty-eight fails for lack of a second. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read in amendments thirty, or excuse me, amendment thirty-nine.
Amendment number thirty-nine on page four and line twenty-three after, in quotation that, insert in quotation, they shall not exceed the following intensity of use per lot, colon, a weekday daily trip rate of one-point-four-six trips per thousand square feet of gross floor area, comma, and/or a peak hour trip generation rate of point-one-two trips per thousand square feet of gross floor area, and that quotation.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve amendment thirty-nine.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie and Mr. Bennett.
That wasn't me.
It moved in second. Any discussion?
That wasn't me, Pat.
That was Tony.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got it. Is there any discussion again? Mr. Bennett?
I mean, this intensity of use piece and the impact of the daily trips and the amount of trips coming in and out of these facilities, especially at their peak hours, has been one of the biggest issues brought up in public comment for the past year-plus, going on two years, and it needs to be addressed in the bill. This language has been in every other version of the bill that's been written and sent to us via memo or informally passed around up until this final version of the bill in which the intensity of use piece was removed. To me, it's been non-controversial amongst those of us who support this legislation up until now, in, in addressing that there's a conversation in the planning process about the maximum amount of trips that can be estimated to come in and out of these facilities. You know, this amendment is not about anybody standing outside of each warehouse of a clicker counting the trucks that come in and out, but it's about having purposeful planning dialogues between the county and the people proposing a project on how many vehicles they expect to come out maximum per day, per hour, and this helps us do that. These numbers are not random, you know, these numbers come from the industry themselves, and so, I hope to have four votes of support to get this language back into this legislation as it has been in every other form of legislation we've, you know, considered formally and informally.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else want to speak? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Pennman?
No.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being three votes in the affirmative, four votes in the negative, amendment thirty-nine is denied. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read amendments forty through one-hundred-and-twelve. And I, I will say, the majority of these are going to move fairly quick.
Amendments forty dash one, dash forty dash one-twelve, introduced by Council President Vincenzo across to the county executive. Doesn't say anything after that. Amendment number forty on title page in line fifteen of title paragraph after the word processing in quotations, insert a comma, semicolon, and in the same line, strike the second in quotations and. Amendment number forty-one on the title page in line sixteen of the title paragraph after the word, in parentheses, delivery, insert.
Quotations.
Quotations, insert, and, end quote. Amendment number forty-two on the title page in line twenty of the title paragraph, strike in quotations warehousing and substitute in quotations warehousing. Amendment number forty-three on title page in line twenty-two of the title paragraph after the word in quotations feet, insert the end quote. Amendment number forty-two, forty-four on page two in line twelve after the word in quotation processing, insert a comma, semicolon, and in the same line, strike the first in quotation and, semicolon, and in the same line after the word in quotation delivery, insert and, end quote. Amendment number forty-five on page two in line sixteen, strike ware, in quotation warehousing and substitute in quotation warehousing, capital W. Amendment number forty-six on page two in line seventeen after the word in quotation feet, insert and, end quote. Amendment number forty-seven on page three in line one, strike hyphen. Amendment number forty-eight on page four in line twenty-one, strike number four and substitute number fourteen in quotation. Amendment number forty-nine on page six in line one, strike in quotation B and substitute in quotation D. Amendment number fifty on page six in line four, strike number five and substitute in quotation B. Amendment number fifty-one on page six in line five, strike in quotation A and substitute in quotation one, and in the same line, strike all hyphens. Amendment number fifty-two on page six in lines nine, ten, in lines nine and ten, strike all hyphens. Amendment number fifty-three on page six in line fourteen, strike in quotation B and substitute in quotation two. Amendment number fifty-four on page six in line nineteen, strike in quotation C and substitute in quotation three. Amendment number fifty-five on page seven in line three, strike in quotation D and substitute in quotation four. Amendment number fifty-six on page seven in line seven, strike in quotation E and substitute in quotation five. Amendment number fifty-seven on page seven in line ten, strike in quotation F and substitute in quotation six. Amendment number fifty-eight on page seven in line eleven, strike in quotation five and substitute in quotation C. Amendment number fifty-nine on page seven in line thirteen, strike in quotation G and substitute in quotation seven. Amendment number sixty on page seven in line fourteen, strike in quotation one and substitute in quotation A. Amendment number fifth sixty-one on page seven in line eighteen, strike in quotation A and substitute in quotation one. Amendment number sixty-two on page seven in line twenty, strike in quotation B and substitute in quotation two. Amendment number sixty-three on page seven in line twenty-one, strike in quotation C and substitute in quotation three. Amendment number sixty-four on page seven in line twenty-two, strike in quotation D and substitute in quotation four. Amendment number sixty-five on page seven in line twenty-three, strike, strike in quotation two and substitute in quotation B. Amendment number sixty-six on page eight in line three, strike in quotation three and substitute in quotation C. Amendment number sixty-seven on page eight in line seven, strike in quotation four and substitute in quotation D. Amendment number sixty-eight on page eight in line nine, strike in quotation five and substitute in quotation E. Amendment number sixty-nine on page eight in line nineteen, strike in quotation C and substitute in quotation C.
That was in quotation six.
That was quotation six.
Strike in quotation six and substitute C. That's what I have.
Yep.
Okay. Amendment number seven on page eight.
Seventy.
And line, amendment number seventy on page eight in line twenty, strike in quotation A and substitute in quotation one. Amendment number seventy-one on page nine in line three, strike in quotation B and substitute in quotation two. Amendment number seventy-two on page nine in line nine, strike in quotation C and substitute in quotation three. Amendment number seventy-three on page nine in line eleven, strike in quotation D and substitute in quotation four. Amendment number seventy-four on page nine in line twelve, strike in quotation seven and substitute in quotation D. Amendment number seventy-five on page nine in line thirteen, strike in quotation A and substitute in quotation one. Amendment number seventy-six on page nine in line eighteen, strike in quotation B and substitute in quotation two. Amendment number seventy-seven on page nine in line twenty-two, strike in quotation C and substitute in quotation three. Amendment number seventy-eight on page ten in line four, strike in quotation D and substitute four. Amendment number seventy-four on page ten in line.
Nine.
Amendment number seventy-nine on page ten in line nine, strike in quotation E and substitute in quotation five. Amendment number eighty on page ten in line eleven, strike in quotation one and substitute in quotation A. Amendment number eighty-one on page ten in line fifteen, strike in quotation two and substitute in quotation B. Amendment number eighty-two on page ten in line twenty-three, strike in quotation three and substitute in quotation C. Amendment number eighty-three on page eleven in line twelve, strike.
Line two.
In line two, strike in quotation four and substitute in quotation D. Amendment number eighty-four on page eleven in line five, strike in quotation A and substitute in quotation one. Amendment number eighty-five on page eleven in line nine, strike in quotation B and substitute in quotation two. Amendment number eighty-six on page eleven in line twelve, strike in quotation five and substitute in quotation E. Amendment number eighty-seven on page eleven in line fifteen, strike in quotation C and substitute.
Six.
Six. In line fifteen, strike in quotation six and substitute in quotation F. Amendment number eighty-eight on page eleven in line eighteen, strike in quotation F and substitute in quotation six. Amendment number eighty-nine on page twelve in line two, strike in quotation G and substitute in quotation seven. Amendment number ninety on page twelve in line eight, strike in quotation H and substitute in quotation eight. Amendment number ninety, ninety-one on page twelve in line thirteen, strike in quotation I and substitute in quotation nine. Amendment number ninety-two on page thirteen in line two, strike in quotation J and substitute in quotation ten. Amendment number ninety-three on page thirteen in line nine, strike in quotation K and substitute in quotation eleven. Amendment number ninety-four on page thirteen in. Amendment number ninety-four, on page thirteen, in line eighteen, strike, in quotation, "One," and substitute, in quotation, "A." Amendment number ninety-five, on page fourteen, in line four, strike, in quotation, "Two," and substitute, in quotation, "B." Amendment number ninety-six, on page fourteen, in line six, strike, in quotation, "Three," and substitute, in quotation, "C." Amendment number ninety-seven, on page fourteen, in line ten, strike, in quotation, "Four," and substitute, in quotation, "D." Amendment number ninety-eight, on page fourteen, in line fifteen, strike, in quotation, "Five," and substitute, in quotation, "E." Amendment number ninety-nine, on page fourteen, in line eighteen, strike, in quotation, "Six," and substitute, in quotation, "F." Amendment number one hundred, on page fourteen, in line twenty-two, strike, in quotation, "Seven," and substitute, in quotation, "G." Amendment number one oh one, on page fifteen, in line eight, strike, in quotation, "Development," and substitute, in quotation, "Development." Amendment number one oh two, on page sixteen, in line twenty, strike, in quotation, "Subsection," and substitute, in quotation, "Subsection." Amendment number one oh three, on page seventeen, in line one, strike, in quotation, "Subsection," and substitute, in quotation, "Subsection." Amendment number one oh four, on page twenty, in line three, after the comma, insert, in quotation, "A," and in the same line, after, in quotation, "Or," insert, in quotation, "A." Amendment number one oh five, on page twenty, in line seven, strike, in quotation, "Has." Amendment number one oh six, on page twenty, in line sixteen, after the comma, insert, in quotation, "A," and in the same line, after, in quotation, "Or," insert, in quotation, "A." Amendment number one oh seven, on page twenty-eight, in line two, strike, in quotation, "Freight Terminal," and substitute, in quotation, "Freight Terminals," and in the same line, strike, in quotation, "Freight Terminal," and substitute, in quotation, "Freight Terminals." Amendment number one oh eight, on page twenty-eight, in line four, after the word, in quotation, "Processing," insert, comma, and in the same line, strike, the first, in quotation, "And," and in the same line, after the word, in quotation, "Delivery," insert, "And," end quote. Amendment number one oh nine, on page twenty-eight, in line eight, strike, in quotation, "Warehouseing," and substitute, in quotation, "Warehouseing." Amendment number one ten, on page twenty-eight, in line nine, after the word, in quotation, "Feet," insert, an end quote. Amendment number one eleven, on permitted use chart one, in footer, add, in quotation, "Two sixty-seven, attachment nineteen, colon, twenty," in quotation mark. Last but not least, amendment number one twelve, on permitted use chart, page two, in footer, add, in quotation, "Two sixty-seven, attachment nineteen, colon, twenty-one," in quotation marks.
Take a break. All right, so Amendments forty through one twelve. May I have a motion?
Council President?
Mr. President. Mr. Penn?
I make a motion to separate, as a group, the following Amendments forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven.
Go through them again real quick, please.
Forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, one eleven. I guess I just need a request, not a motion.
All right, we'll vote on those separately. Are you saying as a group?
As a group.
So, I'd like to have a motion on Amendments forty through one twelve, excluding forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven.
Council President, I make a motion to approve Amendments forty-three through one twelve.
Did you say forty? Or forty?
You said forty-three.
Forty, yeah.
Forty through one twelve, or is it forty through forty-two? Forty through forty-two?
Forty through one twelve.
Okay, forty through one twelve, forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven.
Excluding?
Excluding forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved in a second to approve Amendments forty through one twelve, excluding forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven. Is there any discussion? Mr. Penn?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the reason why we're moving these, because they're already covered in the amendments that we've already approved, so they're redundant.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Amendments forty through one twelve, excluding forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven, to Bill twenty-three oh twenty-six, are hereby approved. Mr. Kearney, do we need to take a short recess for you?
Well, are you going to address the ones that you've severed out, forty-six, forty-nine, one oh seven, one ten, and one eleven?
Is there a motion to approve them?
Mr. President, in order to get it on the table, because you can't get it on a table and discuss unless there's a motion made, I move to approve them.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Done.
All right, they fail due to lack of a second. Mr. Kearney, do you need a recess?
Well, I can take a recess. You continue one up, and I'll go up and see if I can put together something as amended.
We're going to take a short recess.
Okay, we're back. We have Mr. Penn.
Yes, Mr. President, in view of the vote on Amendment number twelve, I make a motion to reconsider the vote on Amendment number thirteen.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to reconsider Amendment thirteen. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Amendment number thirteen.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Mr. President?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
No.
Mr. Janjordano?
No.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
There being six votes, or excuse me, one vote in the affirmative, and six in the negative, the motion fails. Agenda item number eleven, call for final reading of bills. Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-six, Amendments to the Zoning Code Sections two sixty-seven dash four, two sixty-seven dash sixty, two sixty-seven dash one twenty-six Warehouse, as amended, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-three dash twenty-six, Amendments to Zoning Code Sections two sixty-seven dash four, two sixty-seven dash sixty, two sixty dash one twenty-six Warehouse, as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. It's been moved in a second to approve Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-six, as amended, is there any discussion? Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm disappointed in this legislation. I believe the county has outlined an evaluation process to determine the need and the impact of warehousing, but I have seen no evidence that the burden has been met by the county to effect or influence this substantial change in the zoning code. There's been no studies, there's been no analysis, there's been no data, there's been no fiscal note that was required by the code and requested by the code. We know nothing about the economic impact of this legislation. And I have no doubt that this bill will result in expensive litigation where everyone loses. Because of the inadequate basis for this legislation, we are left with a terrible product that, again, everyone loses. This bill will now put requirement demands on the project that will require a more intense and impact the full product. I can tell you, I saw today a possible future site plan of what this bill will look like, this property will look like if the bill passes. And as you can see, the warehouses will continue. You'll have ten two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot warehouses. The roads will not be improved, this is a bad product. But meanwhile, you have over one million square-foot warehousing. This is a terrible bill. I ask my colleagues on the council to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
You know, this legislation doesn't do nearly all that I would hope it would do in modernizing our code with what we now know about the changes to the warehousing industry, really driven by e-commerce. But, you know, it doesn't do nearly all that the legislation my office prepared over the summer. It's a compromise, it's imperfect, it's a step in the right direction, it's no silver bullet for any individual project across the county, it was never designed to be a silver bullet. The hope was to modernize the code, and if that so happened to impact any projects, that's the nature sometimes of modernizing the code. What Councilman Penn held up just now is a hypothetical printout of a design plan that really has no reflection on anything actual or tangible, it's just something scary some people held up at five o'clock this afternoon, and they're trying to convince the council to do something different. And in my opinion, if people are rushing over here to try and scare us to vote against the bill, that's probably a good sign that the bill does something good, if people are rushing over to show us a bunch of rectangles on a sheet of paper. So, that being said, I'm going to continue to support the bill, imperfections in all, warts in all, because I like steps of progress in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Just a quick, I kind of agree with everybody on this, it's, this has been one of the tougher bills, and I, it's my thirteenth year on the council, and I've had a lot of tough bills at our time, but that, I got to think this is probably one of the toughest bills we've ever had, because we've had so many people on so many sides of so many issues on this bill, I can't begin to tell you, we've all met with dozens and dozens of people over this period of time, and we've had amendments flying, papers flying, arguments and discussions, and, just discussions, no arguments. And so, it's probably the best that can be done at this point, and remember, if this bill passes, you know, if some, we find something down the road that's not conducive to the area, that let us know, because if it passes, it can be amended. And nothing's in, nothing's carved in granite, you know, forever. Something isn't working, you let us know, and we'll put an amendment in and change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Sodles?
Yeah, I go back to my comments previously made about the pattern of piecemeal amendments to the zoning code. It is time to look at a complete code review and rewrite, and I urge the administration to begin working on that process as soon as possible. This bill will affect economic development, tax base, and job creation, which does affect all of us. It could be long-lasting and result in the cutting of services and tax increases or both. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Janjordano?
There's been changes in the, in the zoning codes, there's been changes in the bills, look back at two thousand and eight, there were some changes in the B three, allowing apartments, there's been changes to various bills along the, in the past years. I've got the opportunity, I guess because I know a lot of people across the country, I've got some friends that are very high up in, in Amazon, just to say, and what Amazon's looking to do, not saying that this is an Amazon, is Amazon's looking for the one-point-four, one-point-five, the very large warehouses, because they want to be able to have somebody order at nine AM, deliver it by five PM. The only way they can do that is economics of scale, have these large facilities where they can be able to go and drive within a thirty, thirty-mile radius and have it delivered on that, on that side. So they're looking to do this in metropolitan areas where they, you know, have done their analytics more so than any of us will ever know, and only that I know this information is because I've got people on the inside that are telling me this stuff. So, just like a couple of years ago, I was able to, and they're still looking, is that Boeing was looking at a manufacturing site in Hartford County. They, they want something close, they've got a facility in, in Philadelphia, they want something close to that facility that is, is on the ninety-five corridor. So, you know, these are things that, that I've found through, through people that I know that are very high up, and they tell me, hey, we're looking for this, this is, you know, and I, I proposed that, you know, a couple of years ago, and brought that to the County Executive and Economic Development, hey, look, here's the person to contact, this is what they're looking for. So, we don't have much land left, and want to make sure the best use possible of that land. On the same token, I talk to all my commercial clients, and there's a lot of them, and they are in dire need of warehousing from twenty-five thousand square feet up to two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. There, there's people looking to do all kinds of things, they can't find them, they've split, they just recently split up warehousing in Belkamp to smaller units, because they had larger units, they, they couldn't sell them, but that's what, you know, the, the industry is now, is changing. I think during COVID, you had, you know, people that were looking to buy stuff, and they were, the fulfillment centers and everything, now things are starting to change back, you know, and, and things are going to change, and I think things are going to change again. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. In just a few short weeks, this bill would have been before us for two years, and as everyone said, there's been a tremendous amount of effort put in this legislation. But if my time on the council has taught me anything, that this legislation is not done. We'll be revisiting this again, I'm fairly confident, fairly soon. So, it is basically finished for this evening, but I, I do believe it, it breathes, and we'll hear, see it again. So, with that, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
No.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, two votes in the negative, Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-six, as amended, is hereby approved. Agenda number twelve, enrollment of bills. Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-six, Amendments to Zoning Code Sections two sixty-seven dash four, two sixty-seven dash sixty, two sixty-seven dash one twenty-six Warehouse, as amended, is certified as being the text finally passed. Thirteen unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen new business, Ms. Dixon, or Ms. Dixon. Crystal, sorry to make you wait so long.
That's okay. Good evening, Council. For those who don't know, I am the audience app, I'm Crystal Brooks, the county auditor. I am here this evening with a request for the council to approve an extension to the time to complete the county's financial statements. This is a request we go through every year, not for the county's main financial statements, but for the financials of the county's affiliated agencies. So, when the county's financial statement report is issued, you'll see that that includes the Board of Education, the libraries, the Community College, and the Hartford Center, but it does not include things like the volunteer fire companies, the Fire and EMS Association and Foundation, the ARC, and the Humane Society. So those are the agencies that we're requesting an extension from October thirty-first to December thirty-first to complete their financial reporting. Those agencies made up one-point-eight percent of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three appropriations, so it's, it's a fairly small amount, but those agencies are, they just need more time to complete their financial statements. I'm additionally requesting the council approve an exemption of audit for extension services, which is a component of the university system of Maryland, and the Health Department, which is a component of the state Health Department. Like I said, this is a request we do every year, because those small agencies just generally can't get their financial can't get their financial reporting done in time. So I can certainly answer any questions you all have about that, and I would appreciate your approval.
Thanks, Ms. Brooks. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Bennett.
Ms. Brooks, if this is something that we have to do every year, is there any change that we could make to the process so that it just permanently becomes known as December thirty-first, so that you're not having to come to us every year to ask for permission?
Um, it would require a change to the county charter, so you all would have to approve that change, and then the voters would have to approve the change also.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Pennman.
Ms. Brooks, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I know I've relied on your expertise multiple times along with the other council members. So I just want to thank you. You're the first one in the building and the last one to leave most days, so thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? So, counsel, this is an action item for this evening. So, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the auditor, auditor's request for audit extension and exemption request fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded, the auditor's extension request. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the auditor's request for audit extension and exemption request fiscal year twenty-twenty-three is hereby approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move into agenda number seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens.
You forgot adequate public facilities reported by you.
Ms. B.
Okay.
Have anyone signed up?
Yes, we have nine speakers, Mr. President. John Malamo, followed by Doug Shamber, Shamber.
Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh-two Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. On four April twenty-twenty-three, there is a notice of a meeting between members of the county executive staff and Hartford County Airport Owners Group personnel to discuss Hartford County Airport runway extension. On five June twenty-twenty-three, there is a notice of a meeting between county executive Cassley, members of his staff, president of the Hartford County Airport Owners Group, and another individual not further identified about Hartford County Airport. On six June twenty-twenty-three, there is a notice for a pre-app meeting to modify the existing special exception at the Hartford County Airport. On twenty-nine August twenty-twenty-three, Hartford County Airport applied for a permit to build a sixteen-unit T hangar. This building is not on any approved site plan. In fact, there is no approved site plan. Approval for Plan Two Thirty-eight, twenty-nineteen expired on thirty October twenty-twenty-one. There's no record in the county's public database. It was extended. There is a note in the permit request file that there is a Board of Appeals case active on the site and that a hold is active. On thirty August twenty-twenty-three, planning and zoning approved. The request for a permit commenting per director, DAC waiver approved, twenty-nine August twenty-twenty-three. This is the director, who in a previous capacity recommended approval of the application for special exception to operate a general aviation airport without any approach and landing paths, who at the DAC meeting stated airport expansion and operation is subject to the conditions of Board of Appeals Case Fifty-eight fourteen, and is now apparently ignoring those conditions and the county code. I wonder, is there a reason the airport's activities are out of the public view and kept away from the review by the zoning board of appeals? Is there something to hide? Very curious. I wonder, with no approved site plan and without zoning board of appeals approval, who authorized the director of planning and zoning to approve the request for a building permit? Who authorized the extension of runway oh-one-nineteen? I understand that you may not have known about any of this. What is disturbing is that the county executive and his staff are apparently making decisions for the Board of Appeals without input from that body. That would mean that the Board of Appeals is a subordinate agency to the county executive. If the county council zoning board of appeals does not police its decisions, actions, and cannot hold their authority, who is left to do so? Or has the whole function been dismissed by the county executive is irrelevant? Maybe the zoning board of appeals is merely an inconvenience to the county council and unnecessary. Council President Vincenti, you are the presiding officer of the zoning board of appeals. This is your responsibility. Could you please provide an answer? Ma'am, gentlemen, this is all about you. It's not historical. It's today. Good night.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Hello. Doug Shamber, eleven-twelve Jade Drive, Bel Air, Maryland, two-one-zero-one-four. That's Foston School District. Good evening, council and fellow citizens. Missed the last few weeks, I was busy working within the community. Just want to start off by saying Act Twenty Thirty-five, it's more blessed to give than receive. There's been a lot of talk the past few weeks within talking about different bills, development that's going on, and a lot of my fellow community members have done a great job coming here, speaking before you, addressing the concerns that we have, including the environmental concerns, traffic concerns, schools concerns. One thing that hasn't been addressed yet are, is the strain that it's putting on our rec programs. I have three, four kids, one's now out of the rec program in high school. I got three. They're all involved in travel, basketball, baseball, soccer, football. So I stay quite busy traveling around Maryland, Northern Virginia, Pennsylvania, and I go to these fields and I see what Howard County, Montgomery has as far as their baseball fields and their soccer fields. And when you look at ours, ours are just, they're, they're very subpar, to say the least. So I have a lot of concern with, in addition, with the influx of new residences into the community, particularly children that are coming in, but we don't reinvest into our facilities. We haven't, in the last six years, we've had a lot of new development in the Foston community. We have no new baseball fields, no new soccer fields, no new basketball facilities. So our, our programs are continually stretched thin. I am the Foston Basketball Commissioner, and last year we had five-hundred-and-thirty-nine boys registered and three-hundred-and-thirty-six girls. So we had eight-hundred-and-seventy-five kids playing rec basketball in our community. That's a lot of kids, you know, with the schools look like as far as their populations. You know, it goes beyond that because we have a lot of kids in elementary, middle school that are going to private schools. They also use our rec programs. This year alone, we currently have five-hundred-and-forty-one boys. That's two more than we had last year, and we still have a week left of, of registration. I've had to close two of our age groups, which each year I have to close age groups earlier and earlier every year because we just don't have the facilities. We use, we use Foston Middle School, the Chennawith Center, Youth Benefit Elementary School. Sometimes we get the high school, and we also rent private gyms in the area so that we can provide a, you know, a rec program for the kids. And, and today I had to tell two moms, your kids on a waiting list. So we have kids that want to play basketball, they want to play other sports, but they can't because we just simply don't have the facilities for them. And, and as I said, each year I see new kids into the community, which is great. It's, it's really, I mean, it's bringing diverse group of kids. I love it. It's great. But every year we gotta just tell more and more kids that they can't play. So I'm a little long-winded here, but I just want to say that it's time that we start thinking about the future of the children in the community and their plans and their rights instead of the over-developers' rights. Foston needs that athletic fieldhouse that was promised to us.
Please bring your comments to a close, sir.
Act Twenty Thirty-five, it's more blessed to give than to receive.
Thank you, sir.
Diana Sadowski, followed by Chuck Miesan.
Good evening. Diana Sadowski, eleven-thirteen Stromco Drive, Foston, Maryland. I want to say that I can't be any more prouder of my fellow Hartford Countians with their impassioned comments at the October second meeting here. Bravo and brava, it's living proof that one voice, when combined, becomes a roar that cannot be ignored. Now I pray that each one of you have heard our voices and will vote yes on these bills. Now is not the time for cowardice by voting no or abstaining. I come now to an uncomfortable issue. I've attended numerous meetings as a constituent of District B. I hear very little acknowledgement from my representative regarding our community. What I do hear is passion in his voice regarding the Sheriff's Department whenever he speaks about it. Mr. Pennman, I truly feel that's where your heart is. It's palpable every time you speak. You have a strong connection there, and perhaps you could persuade Sheriff Geller to come and speak about the correlation in the uptick between crime and apartments. I honestly wish I could hear that same passion regarding the preservation of our rural community. It's simply not there. You, sir, and others on the council are more concerned with continuing the policies and agenda of the previous administration, and if not halted, Hartford County will no longer be recognizable. What will you do then? Move on, I suppose. Perhaps we're just a stepping stone into something else politically, but I guess your political hand, hand drawers have a grip on that and you. You, sir, could be a very valuable asset to your district. However, you've chosen to walk on the opposite side of your constituents. Speaking and writing to you is like talking to a brick wall. Your canned responses are a joke. You said you were excited that the developer reduced the apartments from a hundred to forty-eight. Sir, your constituents are saying no even to that. Business zones are for businesses, not residences. Have you seen those black and white signs throughout our community, or have they all disappeared from where you live? That's further proof that you're out of touch with the community you represent. Earlier this year, I spoke with Stephanie Taylor at the Board of Elections. I understand that Hartford County doesn't have a recall provision and that only the council can remove a council member. Mr. Vincenti, there is a lot of very unhappy constituents out there who feel they have no representation in Aaron Pennman. Mr. Vincenti, will you work with our county executive to help us obtain the representation we truly need? Thank you.
Ms. Sadowski, just before you walk away from the microphone, the council has no authority to police its members.
Okay, well then.
I, I'm just, you don't have to respond. I'm just saying that now so you understand. We sent a response back to the county executive. It's in his corner now, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Good evening. Chuck Miesan, eighteen-twelve Park Beach Drive. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not able to speak on the issues that I wanted to today, which is fine.
Thank you, sir.
But I do want to thank everybody for all their hard work every day. Don't get this, don't get to hear that enough, I think, and appreciate you. What I want to talk about tonight is the Hartford Land Trust, attended event, and their party to preserve in Elk Ridge Hartford Hunt Club on Saturday. Just want to give a shout out to that organization. They've done a lot to save thousands of acres of property in this county, and those are the things that we need to keep doing more, more of. Last year, from July twenty-twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, they permanently preserved two-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight acres in Hartford County. Those are landowners who decided to preserve their land, to give up the profits, still, still receive some profits, but give up the big profits and save their land for generations and generations. And I know the county, Hartford County, has also purchased property from Hartford Land Trust in the Perryman area recently for parks. So Hartford Land Trust is a great organization that is a middleman for a lot of these transfers. I know Jim, you were there, just a great event up there. And they hope to settle on one-thousand-eighty-two more acres in the next twelve months. So I urge more landowners to consider preserving their property and reach out to Hartford Land Trust to discuss all the profits that you do receive in preserving your land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lee Maddox, followed by Stacy Stone.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I am writing, I am speaking here tonight as an actively involved resident of Hartford County, deeply concerned about potential conflicts of interest, transparency, and ethical conduct surrounding Councilman Pennman's dual roles. Recent events have amplified these concerns, specifically during the Monday, October second, twenty-twenty-three public hearing on Bill twenty-three-zero-twenty-six regarding zoning for warehouses. Councilman Pennman displayed a concerning approach. He conducted an intensive and seemingly inappropriate line of questioning towards the bill sponsors. The very next day, on October third, twenty-twenty-three, his aggressive interrogation of the county attorney underscored the pressing need to address his behavior. Furthermore, a third incident involved an attempted interrogation of Councilman Jim Riley. It's noteworthy to mention that Councilman Riley, with his background as retired police officer, was equipped to navigate and defuse the situation in a manner that may not have been, that others may not have been able to. This series of events not only detracted from essential public commentary, but also raised questions about Councilman Pennman's approach to fellow officials and the topics at hand. While your response dated October third, twenty-twenty-three indicates the council's current stance on challenging a member's qualifications, it remains an open question as to the full extent of the council's powers in this matter. That said, based on the precedent set in Hartford County's Bennett case, it's clear that the executive branch has the authority to address such concerns. I strongly urge the council to consider formally requesting County Executive Cassley to review, and I do understand you've sent a letter, this matter urgently and take immediate action given the potential violations of the county charter and the principles of good governance. I kindly suggest that the council contemplate passing a resolution on this issue. It'll be stronger than a letter and will send a clear message. Clear collective action from the council would greatly bolster the integrity of our local government, governance. You know, we all work under the Constitution in these chambers, and there are separations of powers for a reason. And you, for you, sir, to think you can sit as a legislator and also walk the streets with your firearm and arrest citizens and interrogate people who come before this body is just inappropriate. So I do urge you all to take the appropriate action. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Stacy Stone, twenty-one oh-six Park Beach Drive, Perryman. I'm here this evening to discuss infrastructure and signing on the Perryman Peninsula. We have recently had four incidents where our community has seen trucks driving in inappropriate areas. Two of those, two of those incidents caused accidents. One of those blocked my access or my ability to leave my home and, and get out of Perryman for four and a half hours. That same incident that blocked me from leaving would have also blocked an ambulance or a fire truck, should the need be. I have a young lady that's staying with me until her apartment's ready next week. She has a heart condition. If she had had a cardiac incident, how was an ambulance supposed to get to me? So I urge you, as a body, to consider the implications of the truck traffic in Perryman. We, we need this council to stand strong with us, to get improvements, safety improvements, to keep these trucks out of where they don't belong and allow us to come and go from our homes in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ron Stucinski, followed by Gillian Miller.
Good evening, sir.
Ron Stucinski, three-nineteen Marina Avenue, Perryman. I don't really have much to say tonight. I, I want to thank everyone that's put forth the effort and hard work to help the zoning codes move along in the correct direction. I applaud those of you that met with not only that, the developers, landowners, but also took the time to listen to the citizens' concerns. And I would assume the five of you that voted for the bill did that, and the two that didn't, didn't understand citizen concerns. But what you need to understand is we're the reason you guys are up there, to represent us, not people that come from out of town, not people that come up here with, and, and I think you already said it better. and I think already you said it best with economic numbers or what have you. I know you keep questioning it, but it's never been provided by you or your people either, right? Or the jobs, the jobs. My fiance is an HR manager for a warehouse that operates legally in Bellcamp. My wife, I'm sorry, my ex-fiance.
I think you need to stop right there.
All right. Thank you guys for everything. Love it.
Good lord. The thing they say is "ex-wife."
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Gillian Miller, 408 Chrisfield Drive, Abingdon, Maryland. I'm here tonight to express my extreme disappointment in Harford County political officials, specifically Councilman Pennman and Riley, who have signed the petition to reverse the decision, which changed the names of Opost Elementary and Harford Academy. Would you want your child to attend a school named after Ted Bundy? Doubtful. I mean, yes, he is a part of history, and we can still teach about him. But it doesn't mean our children have to glorify him by attending a school named after him. The curriculum hasn't changed to remove the history of John Archer or William Peca. But we should be learning from history and moving forward by making better decisions. This name change is a learning step for us all and should be viewed as such. Did you know that 76% of the student population at Opost Elementary are minority children? Do you think that communities should be subject to their children going to a school named after a slave owner who owned over 100 slaves? It seems questionable that elected officials, other than the school board members, have signed the petition. Council members, county executives, police officials, state attorneys shouldn't be trying to exert control over an entity that was ruled separate by the Maryland Supreme Court. Do any of you even have any ties to either of those communities? Please do not use our children as political chess pieces. Where were you when the original decision was being made to change the names? I remember the fiasco because I was there. I don't recall seeing you all when it was time to express your discontent. Are you only interested when you get to be in the political spotlight? Please ask the people who are involved with those schools for input, not Moms for Liberty and Friends, who are just looking for their next exciting topic in their attempt to dismantle the public education system so that our government can pay for them to indoctrinate their children. The night the name changes were decided, both principals called into the Board of Ed meeting and chose their new school names from the names that were submitted by community members, who actually participated when the topic was at hand. These principals and their school communities were so excited after completing surveys and sharing discussions about the potential changes. So it seems this is a good decision. On that night, the Board of Ed decided at that point to no longer choose people, people's names for schools so we don't have this issue going forward. This is sensible and the right way to learn from history. So in conclusion, going forward, before you all sign petitions, I expect that you do better research and not be one-sided and blinded by your own personal prejudices. Some of you up there know how it feels to be persecuted. And yet you are advocating to leave a school name in place, which would allow all of our children to possibly feel that way. If it's not a good feeling for you, imagine how our youth, who are still learning appropriate emotional development, feel.
Thank you, ma'am.
The last speaker this evening, Bill Montanari.
He's not, he's not going to speak.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Chicken. Thank you. We'll go to business from council members. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening, everybody. First, you know, since we are honoring Breast Cancer Awareness Month tonight, I was going to speak to this earlier, but there was just a mix-up over the microphone. For the past year now, my stepmom's battling triple-negative breast cancer. The only reason it was discovered is because she went against her insurance that told her, "No, you don't have to go every year anymore for a mammogram. Please go every two years. We'll have to pay for less." And so she refused and pushed back on that and is continuing to go every year. Because of that, they found a cluster of cells early enough that she's still here. If she had waited till this year to do that mammogram, you know. So I just say that especially for a lot of the older women in our community or women older than me, which, you know, that's my wife. She's 31. But I just really encourage you, if your insurance says to stop going every year, don't listen to your insurance. That's not medical advice. That's financial advice for them. And then along those same lines, you know, supporting research. The reason my stepmom is doing really well, triple-negative breast cancer is extremely aggressive and traditionally has been very hard to fight off. And also typically it's in younger women. It's not seen in older women. But, which hopefully my stepmom's not watching because now I've called her older twice. But she's retired, though, so. But anyway, the reason that she's doing so well is because her doctor was able to pull out a file and say, "I just read new research on this, and there's a treatment out there that's new, but the data looks good." And because of that, it's been an extremely successful cycle of treatment over the past year of surgery, and things are looking good. And I get more years of my stepmom. My dad has more happy years of retirement to look forward to, you know. And so please, over this month, if you are considering donating, please donate to research. If you are behind on your medical checkups, take care of your medical checkups. It matters. That's coming from someone who didn't go to the dentist for 10 years. Like, take care of yourself. It, it's important. Beyond that, I do just want to speak briefly to our votes on the amendments. You know, like I spoke to earlier, I didn't expect everything to pass. Anything that we did get passed was a win. And, you know, it's not the win I wanted, but it's the win we got. I do just want to speak to Amendment 39, which failed with a 3-4 vote. You know, I, I knew and expected that our Councilman Pennman, Council President Vincenti, and Councilwoman Boyle Sodles would vote no on Amendment 39. But I was hopeful that I would have the support of our representatives from A, C, and D, along with me, to get a 4-3 vote. I had had personal conversations with those three members of our council and, and knew for sure that I had the support of Councilman, of, of Councilman G and Councilman Riley. This afternoon, I, I, I went to Councilman Guthrie's office around 4:30 just to check in with him one last time, because the last time we had talked, he said, you know, "I just need to look at some more and think it over." When I went to his office to talk with him, I sat down and asked if we could just talk about it for a few minutes. His response was, "Well, that depends. How do you feel about my hotel tax bill coming up?" I said, "You know, that's two months away. I really want to focus on tonight and focus on what's ahead of us." He said, "Well, you know, if you're not going to vote yes on my hotel tax bill, I'm not supporting your amendments." I, I let him know I do not trade votes. This job is too important and too serious for me to play votes like chess pieces. It's about what's best for my community step by step. I still have questions. I want to learn more about his hotel tax bill. I want to hear the public hearing. I have meetings with constituents coming up to talk about it more. I wasn't willing to guarantee a vote two months in advance. That's not how I go through the process. Councilman Guthrie raised his voice at me. He cursed at me and told me that he would not support any action that I put forward from here on out if I don't guarantee my support for his hotel tax bill. So it's unfortunate. You know, it's one thing to be against an amendment because you're against the amendment. I understand that. It's part of the process. It's how it works. But to use something that's so vital to a community's well-being as a pawn to get something that you're working on, I take issue too. And I'm not going to be pushed around. I'm not going to be bullied. And I'm not going to be manipulated into doing something I'm uncomfortable with just to try and make a win for my community. I, I don't want to bend my morals or my best practices in that way. That's not how I'm going to govern, and I'm not going to be shamed for doing that. But I do think it's shameful that tonight, a vote could have been tarnished and may have been tarnished because I wasn't willing to play ball and trade votes. I might very well vote yes on that hotel tax bill in November. It could happen. If it's what I feel is best for my community, I'll vote yes. Once we hear from everybody, this isn't going to impact whether I vote yes or no on that bill because what we do is too important for me to play that type of game. But shameful that tonight, that's the type of action and I would expect from someone with 13 years of experience, better decorum than that. So I hope that I learned lessons there and that you don't shut off District F from support for the next three years because I'm not willing to give you a two-month guarantee on a bill that hasn't had a hearing yet. I hope that you would care for the 40-plus thousand people who live in District F and neighbor your district enough that that would not be the case because what we do is so important, and I'm not willing to play that game. Thank you. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Enough, enough, enough. Ms. Sodles?
I'll reserve my comments for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Riley or Mr. Riley?
Yes, first off, I would like to say to Councilman District F, you have to get your facts right because me and the Councilman from District C did vote for Amendment 39. We did vote for 39, so just make sure you get your facts straight. We did vote for that. It failed, but you had two colleagues. And it might not be a good legislature to throw our names out there as if we didn't vote for something that we did. Second of all, I would like to say kudos to the citizens. I would like to say kudos-
Hold on just a second. Seriously, we've got through this full night without having any issues. Let's continue.
I'd like to say kudos to the citizens and the business environment, especially 3P. They've been here for almost two years, and I appreciate you hanging around. We finally got this done. I also would like to say that I had two Eagle Scouts this week, and I love Eagle Scouts, Timothy Malone and Nathaniel Hawk from Troop 265 of Madonna. Congrats to them. And also had the privilege of going to the Harford Land Trust party to preserve the fundraiser on Saturday. It's probably the best fundraiser I've been in my elected career. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Janger-Dana?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So I, I know there was a gentleman that spoke earlier that lives in Bel Air. Rec fields are in Falston. So I did just text our Deputy Director of Parks and Recs. I'd like to talk with him further. Very passionate about sports, about youth sports, about rec fields, and seeing if we can look at somewhere that we can upgrade our fields. I grew up in northern New Jersey, and our, our fields up there were fantastic 40 years ago. I've driven around the different states, and I've seen better rec fields, better fields, and always an advocate for that. So I'm going to look at, at that and see how we can maybe get those built up and get some more money into those programs. So that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janger-Dana. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick items. Mr. Richardson, if you could just convey, I know that we're approaching, they don't have the numbers yet, but the COAs and the 1.5% that we were waiting on for county employees. I'd like to see kind of where that is in discussion, possibly with the state running a surplus, maybe even add to that. So I look forward to a further conversation with you and the administration on that. And regarding the 315, 317 Mountain Road project that DAC has been rescheduled, pushed back with the new proposed plans that were discussed going to be submitted. So I look forward to following that progress as well. So that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with Jim Riley. Unfortunately, Mr. Bennett cannot get his facts straight. For him to make the statement that he made was unheard of. Half of that stuff's a lie. And I have so many friends in District F, and I met with a lot of you that, in this room, over them same bills, over those same amendments. He's come to me three different times on those amendments, and I told him all three times that I could not support them amendments, that it was not fair to the people who are spending millions and millions of dollars in, in the Perryman place, putting up those buildings. And it's unfair to, to tell them that they can only get X number of, of vehicles in there on, on a, on a daily basis. So if you, if you, if you did, if you did say, "Well, just as, as a guess, there's a, you only allow on 100 a day, for instance, and the guy needs to bring in 120, and he can't bring in the other 20, where the hell are they going to go?" That, excuse me, excuse me. And then the next day that he wants to bring in 65, do you weigh it out? I mean, and who the hell is going to keep track of that? You're not going to keep, be able to keep track of it. So it, it's disappointing that he'd come out here and lie about our conversation. And I'm very disappointed. I've tried to help him since he's come in and got here. I know he's inexperienced. I know he teaches kindergarten, and he, he's inexperienced in here. I tried to help him, and it, it's, it's went to, it's, it's went to-
What does that mean that I teach kindergarten? Are you calling me dumb because I help five-year-olds every day?
Jacob.
Excuse me?
Please, please. Mr. Guthrie, bring your comments to a close, please.
You through? Thank you, Mr. President. Wednesday, October the 4th, Richmond Ballroom had an event for Harford County Commission on Disabilities, which I normally would have done, but I had a conflict interest. So I sent my legislative, Debbie Button, and she took a proclamation, or they took a proclamation, congratulate them on, on their National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And so I want to congratulate them on that. Also, attended my meeting today for Hope for the Homeless today at 12:30. And they, they are very concerned over the fact of that homeless is increasing in our county, and they don't have the facilities to, to take care of them. There are so many people on a waitlist right now, particularly couples with children who don't have any home. And so we're trying to figure out what we can do about that. And there's a waiting list. Also, they are concerned, as we are, because we heard a report in here just a couple of weeks ago about the hospitals and the problems because they're closing the hospital in Havering Grace. And they're talking about moving 70-some beds. But it's going to go, but it's only going to balance out, and it's not going to be an improvement on the beds that we have in our county. And so we've really got to think about how we're going to either build hospitals or build additions or add beds in our county. We have over 200, last count, over 266,000 people in our county, and we really need to provide better hospitalization for them. The hospital right here in Bel Air, unfortunately, as, as reported to us, has a two-to-three-hour wait in the emergency room. You go to emergency room for an emergency, and you have two, 10 hours? Are you kidding me?
Ma'am, ma'am. Mr. Guthrie?
I'm sorry. They, they're telling me 10 hours. It is, it is terrible because I know last time my wife had to go in there, she was in six hours before she could get in her room. So we need to take a look at that and see what we can do about the situation in our county for the hospitals. Because the, as you can see, the building and all going on around with all the apartments and everything, you see 543, tremendous up there. We, we need to find out how we're going to extend some of these hospitals so we can provide beds for people who get sick. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. If I may, I'd like to talk to both you and Mr. Bennett after this meeting, please. I want to remind everyone, on October the 12th, this Thursday evening, we will be hosting another APF meeting here in the chambers. It is open to the public. Minutes and documents from the last have been distributed to council members in preparation for Thursday night's meeting at 6:00 PM in this chambers. This past week, my office had an opportunity to attend the Harford County Disability Employment Luncheon. I visited the Cecil County Harvest Dinner, outstanding event. We attended the Harford County Education Foundation Excellence in Education Breakfast. We also supported clients in their bagging for hunger, for the hunger event. And where they made several donations to a couple of organizations here in the county. The Food Bank, Harford Family House, and Riverside Elementary PTA. Also attended the Harford County Sheriff's Office Trunk Retreat Event. We also hosted a tourism meeting in here on Monday morning at 9 o'clock in preparation for the tourism bill that Mr. Guthrie pulled last week so that we could have further discussion with our partners in tourism. And then finally, this morning, I was able to attend the, I guess, the first shift at the Harford County's EMS unit at Siskiyou Hana Host Company at House 3 on Market Street. This will be the second Harford County unit in Havering Grace. And with that, Ms. Dixon, I'd like to bring this meeting to a close.